I'm gonna call our meeting back to order. On Zoom or in. Make sure that the screen here is not muted. Back, we had an executive session. Resume part of our session. But I'll show here, we'll have several opportunities. Evening, that will have its own. Six. Anyway. The five and six report of the. I just want to. Pause a bit just to make sure we are back online. That's something is, and those for people watching. On Zoom apologies if if the connection breaks here at Borough Council will pause briefly and try to come back on. So we do try to make sure we stay online here. Alright, so with that. Earlier in the year, even last year, we've, sorry, starting last year. In discussions about our water system, we have wanted to indicate that we have a time at each meeting to provide a bit of an update on what we are doing on the potential tail of water system. While we took action last month to pick up between the three bids that we had to enter to negotiate with New Jersey American. As the potential top bidder. Those discussions have started. Our attorneys and administrator in particular are hoping to exchange a draft of an agreement. Soon, maybe beginning of next week, at which point, similar to what we've done with the budgets, we want to have a lot of time as we work through negotiations that every council person has had time with our attorneys and administrators. So Doug's gonna start setting up. You know, I may say small groups to have a lot of time to make sure everyone is has a chance to dive into this document once we get it. And we are holding the twentieth as a a regular council meeting technically, but one that is not on a regular date. As likely a date that we would have executive session for some more opportunity for council. If we've got questions or see where we are in the schedule of negotiations with New Jersey American. David or anyone else have any other thoughts to add on where we are? I know it's a little bit frustrating as these things start that you have to wait till the end of negotiations to talk about what the results are?
Oh, right. We can't talk about negotiations, but I would say it's worth mentioning that in parallel to that process. We're doing a lot of data analysis just on a sort of an ongoing work looking at our rates historically, looking at New Jersey Americans' rates historically. You know, one of the things that we did with the RFP was to ask any of the applicants to give us fifteen years of tariffs so they could look at the last decade and a half of their rates and see how they're changing. So that's sort of outside of the negotiations. It's really for us to understand that as a way, as a window potentially into the future when we're looking at the pros and cons of selling or not selling. But also comparing our own rate history. So I've been doing a lot of work on that. And in that process, also just preparing things that are right now in draft internal, but eventually that we will share with the public so that when the time comes, we actually have a draft contract that is out there for all to see. And we will resume the public outreach that we've been doing and be, you know, looking further, not only at the issue of the proposed sale, but also of the economics and projections and so on on the other side of what would the implications be if we were to keep the system and so on. So a continuation of what we've done with additional detail. And then eventually also part of that is tying all those considerations together with the overall fiscal health of the town because these things are related as opposed to just looking only at the water department and rates, you know, how does all that fit together? So in the background, in parallel to the negotiation process, we're working on a lot of analysis, but also in the process then developing materials to share with the public. When the time comes that we can do that. So.
And then the ultimate piece of the schedule is that we expect perhaps later this spring to have the results of negotiation as a document that could be shared both with the state and the public with an eye towards this being finalized as a ballot question in early August and then on the ballot ultimately in November, then with general election for for the community to decide. Lisa, any any piece there that?
Yeah, just it's our our hope really that that agreement will be presented to council on on March twentieth. And at that time, and when it goes to the VPU, shortly thereafter, it would become a public document.
So I'm hoping for council's approval on the twenty. That allow us to send it to the BPO and get the clock started to the BPO.
With that, item eight is our first of, I'll say, three or two and a half public comments. The, I'll take them up. So I'll open the meeting to the public. Mayor and council will take comments. First, members of the public attending in person, then members of the public attending the meeting via Zoom. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Or no immediate action can be taken on the public issues raised. To make a comment or ask a question during the meeting via Zoom, which we do have some Zoom users on there, push the raise hand button and we will promote you so you can speak with the room and make your comments. So first we'll start with the people in person. Feel free to come up to the the front and state your name. No longer necessary to give your address.
I'm Lynn Burge. Chubbies Luncheonette, the owner. I would like to just talk for a minute about the ordinance that is up for vote today. Not much about the details of it, but the process in which it comes to light. You know, we live in a small town. We all know each other, which ordinance or the grease trap ordinance, sorry. There aren't that many restaurants in town. And when something comes through and I've, you know, I heard it on Zoom last month. Then I forgot about it. And then I looked at this month's agenda and I saw it there and I knew it was a second hearing. I thought, why didn't anyone call the restaurants? Why was there no discussion at all? Among the people that this matters the most to. And I'm all for grease traps and clean pipes and people having proper sewer lines. But I don't understand how this town, where the restaurants bring in the most number of people to town, employ the most number of people in town, could be so disregarding. And so I don't know, it breaks my heart actually that that everybody in this town who runs the town didn't have the consideration to just say, let's have a meeting about grease traps. Tell me what you guys think about grease traps. What do you do? How does it work? Before an ordinance comes through when today I called Barry and Auntie Molly, they don't even live in town, so they wouldn't even think to look on the borough's agenda. And I'm wondering what we can do, not just for restaurants, but when there's an ordinance, what can we do to make people in this town feel that they're included in the decision making? And I'm not sure what the answer is. But I do know that it matters. It matters that we feel included. It matters that we're involved. It matters that you hear our voice. And it matters that as a community that we support the people who do the most in this town. And, you know, I'm not speaking on behalf of anybody else. Nobody knows I was coming to speak today. But it's, I don't know, it doesn't bode well for small businesses. Doesn't bode well for the grease trap thing, I mean, whatever happened to the grease trap happens, but it just, it doesn't make me feel that the town is encouraging small businesses to participate in in the community. And I would love to know how we can go forward. I would love to know, like, even if you guys just said, Lynn, can you call all the owners and get them together? I would do that. You know, I don't know what it would take, but it wouldn't take much.
I'll take a stab at this. This was a technical recommendation from our staff and health officer resulting from a particular restaurant that that has not complied with grease trap requirements. Resulting in significant liability potentially to the town and damage to property owners, basements and sewer systems. And the recommendation was to have a ordinance similar to our neighboring towns. And to provide some teeth essentially for the to help us in the restaurants that don't perhaps do what I, sounds like you do, which is maintain your grease traps.
I thought we were supposed to, I mean, I don't know.
You are supposed to. And we aren't happy that you do. Yeah.
And we have the inspections that we give to the health inspector. I mean, we we have this file folder in our file cabinet. When the health inspector comes, he came a couple months ago. He said, where are your grease trap inspections? I hand him the file folder. He looks through and he says, oh, hey, you're past, you know, I mean, in addition to everything else, but so I business comply, that helps, you know, damages that something happens, I should be held responsible. And I think we all want to do the best for this town, you know, I mean, you're the world, you know, we're all doing our best. It's more the process, you know, that I'm really concerned with. Because even though it's a technical ordinance, it's still, you know, it's a little different than what, I mean, I already do this stuff. I don't is that plumber that I, I don't know. I don't know if his fall attempts, I just know he comes with a big thing and brings out the grease trap. But all of these ordinances, not all of them, this one in particular, would affect somebody perhaps with money, you know, who they're gonna get or, you know, who they got in the past. And so small businesses, they budget for things like this, right? So when it's an ordinance and it goes through without any discussion for the people who'd affect, you know, then it's gonna come online, oh, here it's in your mailbox and you didn't even know what's gonna happen. You know, I just, I feel like we are a small community. We can talk about these things. We can come to a resolution. We can come to this resolution perhaps, but I just think we can do it in a better way.
Thoughts? Do you have it? Is there any particular comments on this one or you want to wait till we get to the actual?
Can I just recommend at any earlier discussion really on the grease traps? You just hold it for the public hearing just for the benefit of the public. So that's all. I just think.
Can I say, can I tell you in general about business? And it's, you know, now the liaison on EDC, Ethan and I talk about this every time I run into him at Chubbies. And one of the first questions, questions I asked at the only real meeting we've had this year is, how do we contact businesses? And there isn't even a business directory possessed by the EDC. So I don't even have a way of contacting you. So that is, this is, there's, there's a lot that has been identified.
Sherry, come on, there are five or seven restaurants in town. You couldn't walk around town.
I understand. I understand what you're saying. I'm telling you that I hear you. And I think this is part of a bigger problem. How how do we communicate with businesses? And and do the exact thing that that you're saying. And I'm just saying that there is, there isn't that mechanism right now. And yes, one of the things we're gonna do is walk around to all of the businesses and create this and have a survey of how we can do this better.
Wait, we have a mechanism. We have the Hopewell Borough Small Business, whatever it's called.
Downtown Hopewell.
Downtown Hopewell has a list of all the businesses. All you have to do is get that list. I mean, it's not like you have to reinvent the wheel. You could ask us, I mean, Deb, you know, I mean, the town, the town has a list. You go to the library, they have a list of all the businesses in town. So it's not that hard, really. Especially when it's something like this, when it has to do with food preparation. To know who it's gonna affect.
I'm telling you that I hear you and and there there, I know it's that it sounds like there should be a button that I press to contact everyone and that does not exist right now.
Okay, it's in the works.
Let's do this one at a time.
So I, I, I'm wanting to tell you that I'm hearing what you're saying and I'm agreeing with you that there needs to be better communication. I'm sorry it didn't happen with this situation. But this, and I talked to Ethan about this, talked to Heidi about it, talked to Doug about it. Me personally, as a councilperson, this was this, you know, grease trap. I didn't think very hard about grease traps. I don't know anything about them. And I figured, well, the grease trap is a grease trap. But this is an interesting learning lesson for me that I need to do exactly what you're saying. Look at every ordinance and figure out who does this affect. And my job as a councilperson is to protect you, but also protect the infrastructure of the town, which I never thought about fat and oil and grease going into the sewer system, is to protect the resident who's finished basement gets flooded every few years because I mean, you want to know what? So there's a lot of moving parts and I didn't do my job and consider all those moving parts on this ordinance last month. But now now we've had discussions where I will be better at doing that and especially reaching out to businesses. So thank you for your comments. They are heard.
Yeah, but I, I just wanted to add that I echo Lynn's sentiment that while even if there's, and I want to apologize. I am a councilperson. I am a business owner. I was here at this meeting when we had the first reading. And I admit, I was like, oh, in my mind, I think I mentally assumed that restaurants had been talked to, but I should never, I wish, I should never have assumed that. That was, that was my error. And I sincerely apologize for that. Because I didn't start. I, I knew that I would raise my questions during this meeting and I won't, I don't want to get into the details of the ordinance, but I just hear you a hundred percent on the fact that this is a small town. And everyone, you know, the downtown Hopewell has a list and we information. When people pass it to us, we forward it to all businesses. And we're small enough to sound that personally, I apologize that I did not reach out to you sooner. Because I do think, I, I also don't know a lot about grease traps. We'll get into the ordinance later, but it seems like a conversation that the restaurant should be, should be a part of. And I think that's important that the restaurants are part of the conversation.
Also added, the process that we have has committees, you know, Board Health, EDC, and we try to capture as many groups and balance that with the need to move things forward to get to this night, which is not intended to be the end all, but this is really the first substantive time to discuss a potential change like this outside of committee structure. So the point of last month was to just say that it's something we're gonna be talking about. And the point tonight, in a few minutes, is to talk about it. And I agree with everyone on the dice and you, you know, that it is, it is challenging balance to figure out which things, I'm gonna say, but to hit people over the head, but you know, require or would benefit from a particular level of outreach. I think myself, just in reading this and following along, I too didn't see it raised to that level when the reasoning behind the the changes and maybe they're not trivial for a business. I think we'll be able to talk about that. But was the very not trivial impact that we were faced with, with a business that did not follow the type of maintenance that you're describing that you do necessarily. And and the potential liability to residents, neighborhoods and the town and our sewer system when we find out, realize that we don't have the enforcement abilities to choose my word carefully, but you know, to ensure that everyone acts the way that your business does. And we'll be able to talk about that in in a few minutes, but I agree with you and my colleagues here that, you know, it's it is challenging to find that balance. And sometimes you see something on the base, you don't, yeah, you think through the the impact to the, you know, the really the residents with the numerous basement backup problems and and realizing at that moment that we don't have the tools to help that or to set that situation right, because not everyone does do. It sounds like, I don't know what best practices are for grease traps. It sounds like you very much do and implement them.
Yeah.
And thank you for that, by the way.
You're welcome. Thank you for your curiosity, you know, going forward when we have these ordinances. Yeah, I appreciate it.
Good evening. Dave Higgins. This is in regards to my favorite project. Like called Area Fifty Seven, but Fifty Seven Ambulance.
Before you, before you start, give your name for the record and then it sounds like we'll just confirm, I'll, I guess Lisa and I will go recuse ourselves as we often do for those who are not familiar with the redevelopment project in Hopeful Fifty Seven. Both our town attorney and myself have a, I guess, a professional conflict because of involvement of colleagues in, in, I guess, in the project. So we have not participated and will continue not to. And I physically continue not to by exiting the roof of your performance. And hand off the gavel to President Mackey for me. And the whole meeting, I'm not coming back.
Alright, great. Thank you. So last time I was here and I apologize, I'm caught up on the website. I tried to do the best I can last couple of months. But you already have a list of the properties that Jeffrey over Florida. I'm just curious, is this the other list that he provided you? That you uploaded?
Yes.
And did he provide any other documentation that supports this or was it just this one page?
Just the last.
Fantastic. And in your following up on the references, did you reach out to Avalon Communities or any of your other properties to confirm his involvement, what his projects were? What he did with it?
I'm trying to understand the question.
I don't understand the question.
Did you do a reference check on these projects that he worked on? With whom? Well, Avalon Communities is one of the largest communities in builders in the country. The projects that he mentioned were done twenty-five years ago. In June of twenty twenty-four, in the planning board meeting, he indicated that he had worked on seven thousand projects. And he provided five with no supporting documentation. Including three properties that were done twenty-five years ago. One is Avalon Run and Avalon East. So when I look to hire somebody or maybe hire a plumber, I do a reference check. So I've done that reference check. I reached out to Avalon Communities. I've done business with them. I highly recommend that you do that. In reference to his only project that I can seem to research, which we talked about in board meetings, is the Fordentown project that started in two thousand and seven. And didn't get completed. And subsequently was sold to Fordentown, New Jersey Township. Has any of you ever followed up with the town, the mayor, the administrator of Fordentown to find out exactly why their ten-year project wasn't completed?
No.
That's fantastic. So I
Why is that fantastic?
Because you should follow up.
Oh, if you're being sarcastic.
Yeah, it's fantastic that we were having this conversation. Bear with me. I don't need the comments. I'm asking questions. Okay? I did follow up with the community. I highly recommend that you reach out to Fordentown to find out why a project over thirteen-year period didn't get completed. You're about to put a project down the street that many of the community have serious concerns about. We bring them up in the meetings. And all I'm looking for is to verify whether or not this gentleman has done any projects that provides confidence to the community. I sent out the emails. I made the phone calls to General Counsel. I spoke with the administrator. I highly recommend you do the same thing. Taking one piece of paper that doesn't verify anything about the projects that he's done is worthless. Verify, right? Trust and verify. That's all I'm asking. I ask if you've done it. You haven't. I recommend that you do.
Thank you for your comments.
You have to forgive it.
Right? He was serious. He was.
Apologies for, thank you. Any other in-person folks looking to make a comment or question this evening before we get to the ordinance? Same thing online, push the raise hand button? Oh, please, come on up.
My name is Matt Myers, doing the Borough of Hopeful West Prospect Street. I start with, I'm currently a fire commissioner, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the Board of Fire Commissioner. I see that you have an ordinance before you. It's very similar in wording to an ordinance which was adopted by Hopeful Township. Back in, I believe it was March of last year to collect fees for ambulance services. I don't disagree with the reasons. My concern is simply since the township is collecting for these fees, the only thing that says is that they are authorized to delegate to collection of such fees. Question would be, if one of Hopewell Borough's three ambulances responds to a call staffed entirely by our volunteers, the township is gonna collect those fees. And there's nothing in this ordinance that maybe there can be as to how the township then is going to reimburse the Hopewell Borough Board of Fire Commissioners. That's my only concern.
Excellent question. I don't know if anyone can speak to that yet. I just came about by working with I'll say some of your colleagues at Hopewell Fire to introduce it. So perhaps we can look into that in advance of our next meeting if no one has an answer to that in particular. Our introduction was essentially to
Verify that these are all their services.
But it's the, the service is provided by the fire district. So I don't know if that
That's a sure service.
So it's not, that wouldn't include the rest, the borough rest.
It would.
And that would be the art district.
Oh, through, okay, so through the district.
Are we part, we're part of Hopewell Township Fire District one?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Yes, right. We're, we're, our district is.
We're
Yes.
Got it. So I, I spoke to Sky about this one the other day at Land's, you know, Sky Morehouse, right, sir?
He definitely does.
Yeah, and the way he explained it to me was that, you know, right now we don't charge for ambulance services, right?
Yeah, and the way he explained it to me was that, you know, right now we don't charge for ambulance services, right? So it's gonna start that now when someone needs an ambulance, they can bill that person's health insurance, right? Whatever payment they get would be divided between the the three or the two boroughs that participate in this. I'm not sure how Pennington fits into it exactly.
So it's the same percentages as the fees.
Right.
They'd be used to to divide the the
So they'd they'd be collected centrally on behalf of all of the districts regardless of where it was and then shared in the same proportion.
In the same proportions.
Okay.
And if the person can't afford to pay and doesn't have health insurance, they would receive one bill and then it wouldn't be
Yeah, soft bill, a soft bill.
Just just to clarify the the, because I think your question, Mark, now was was
More about the billing?
Well
Or the shared billing?
Who, yeah, because it because it's the township that bills everyone really is, as it's as it's written. And we make sure that our district and, you know, one fifty to get, you know, credit for that essentially. And it sounds like the mechanism is they're all uniformly billed or collected by the township on behalf of everyone and then redistributed
It's not percentage.
On the percentages.
Correct.
And I think it's a new position for township. I I don't know if it exists now. Is that right, Sharon?
Yeah, yeah. That's interesting though.
Is there a way to just clarify that in this ordinance? Yeah, yeah, because it
Yeah, it's public hearing. Next month, we'll make sure we have the answers for you before then.
Yeah, this came right from Will, right? This this is like the wording was lifted, yeah. But that is a great, you're always keeping an eye on the money. I like it. So I think that that is worth
Yeah, because one of the questions I have is that when they start collecting the funds for our
Yeah.
Budget go down. I think you saw that email.
Right.
Okay, it's too early because they don't have any, any, you know, any historical data. Lower our fees to the municipalities. So once bringing in, there could be an overall savings.
And what's the tracking method? Could be like a shared database where they can see like whomever just coming in. So, you know, what
Yeah, they would, they would, I I envisioned that they would track how much they're bringing in and then they have a budget and now they have another source of revenue.
Right.
So that would be used to, you know, offset what they have to build the communities, I would think.
That would be good. Yeah, but you should track.
Maybe as as a fault, you know, so the emergency services in Hope Valley are this really interesting kind of Venn diagram of overlapping organizations, many of which, like, like, for example, our fire and rescue department and 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 fire district are Hopeful Borough, well, not part of our government necessarily, but Hopeful Borough specific. Whereas OEM throughout the valley is a lot of cooperation with Hopeful Township, both as a governing entity, the other two districts, those commissioners and and perhaps maybe maybe a piece of fault we could do, maybe it could be Point or Sky, but just to make sure we have things right. I know you're not speaking on behalf of the commissioners, but maybe it'd be a good follow for us to the, you know, to our commissioners, to you guys, just to make sure we we have this right from Hopeless perspective. And and I know if if that's if that's you, maybe that we can follow up with, would that be?
Thank you.
Um, so seeing no one else in person, I don't see any hands raised online. Say that. Slowly though, before I ask for a motion to close the first of several public speaking opportunities, I'll take that motion. Slowly make my death. Do I have a slow second to give anyone a suggest? David's the slow second. All all in favor? Our our next item, number nine, is the minutes from our February sixth regular and executive sessions. Unless there's any comment or discussion.
I I have a quick comment. Sorry, I I got really excited about the ordinance that we're just talking about about billing and I mentioned it in February. And I don't know if this really matters, but it, just to be particular, that I said that they can now bill for ambulance services and that wasn't accurate in February. So we're just now talking about the ordinance now.
With that change, would you like to to incorporate that into a motion to approve?
Yes.
All right. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
It's been so long, so it's ten minutes. This is a roll call. Sorry, this is all all in favor? All right. Thank you. The all, it seems like it was a favor, so I don't need any opposed or objections, but thank you. Our next item is our second reading in a public hearing, item ten for ordinance eight ninety four, which is our grease trap maintenance ordinance. Or if you could read that by title?
An ordinance of the Forum of Hopeful County Mercer, New Jersey regarding the air resource system and grease traps specifically, and amending chapter seventeen of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Hopeful nineteen seventy five.
All right. Doug, you want to take a crack on a bit of an explanation on this one?
So we've had some issues with grease traps that failed, probably weren't working properly. So what we've done, and of course, we said that the rural sewage backs up into people's homes. We had to bring in a sewer jet to take care of the the problem on Lafayette, I guess about three months ago, four months ago, maybe. So this is in re- in response to that, right, brought to brought to our attention that was probably doing a lot of damage to our to our sewer system and 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 to residents' properties. So we put some teeth into our ordinance in in this particular ordinance. So some of the things that we want to make sure that that we're legislating is that the all the proper sinks and everything that's supposed to go into the grease trap is actually going into the grease trap that we're not having, we're not having sinks that they use to watch pots going directly into the sewer. Everything's got to go through this, through the grease trap. So we want to verify that. We also want to verify that the grease trap is of a proper size to handle the amount of waste that's going through there, grease that's going through there. And the last thing we want to make sure is that the system is actually working as designed, functioning as designed. And that's where they're asked to have a certified plumber come in and check to make sure it's working properly. Right now, there's inspections that are done, as Lynn had mentioned. People come in, they clean the grease trap. They try to determine how much of the grease is actually going through the grease trap, escaping from the grease trap into our system. You know, we want to keep that to a minimum. And that's all on what they currently, what the restaurants currently provide to the health inspector when he comes in, also tickets for what's happened to the to the maintenance for the grease trap and then also what has happened to the grease that is taken away. So that remains in here, okay? Again, the only addition with that is that we're asking that a certified plumber come in and certify, a licensed plumber come in and certify that the the grease trap is actually functioning. Lynn had mentioned that, you know, we need an ordinance to have some teeth in it so that we can go back to the restaurants that aren't doing what they're supposed to do. And this ordinance provides for that, okay? If they're not maintaining their, if it can be determined that they didn't maintain their grease trap or if it's not functioning and it causes property damage, they can be liable for that and also have to reimburse the borough for when we spend, you know, a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars that a sewer jet come in to 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 clean out the sewer, that area of the sewer. So that's incorporated in here as well. So those are really the the major points.
So one of the questions I have, so you mentioned under, and that was great, you summarized basically all the aspects of this. Obviously, grease traps are only as good as the maintenance that goes on. And but you also mentioned the issue of the capacity, you know, is the grease cap size, cap size correctly? So that's one question when you're putting in a new restaurant, but if you have an existing restaurant and you have a grease trap that's been there for years. You know, what are the options of the determination is and isn't? So is it? Is that, does that lead to, for example, a need for more frequent cleaning if it's smaller than it would be ideally? Or does that require that somebody actually put in a larger grease trap? And if so, what would be the certain, I mean, I'm just exploring this because, you know, if if there's a determination that some establishment that's been there for years and had a grease trap that might have been approved at the time isn't adequate, then what are the remedies? You know, and I maybe I'm just
No, it's a good question.
I think it's important to think about.
Yes, yes. And I'm thinking, I don't know for sure, but we can find out. I'm thinking if the if the if it's possible to increase the size to get it to the new standard, I think that would be desirable. If not, I think, you know, the board of health can work with the owner of the restaurant, decide, you know, this has to be cleaned, you know, instead of monthly, quarterly, I mean, instead of quarterly, monthly, or something like that because of the limitations on, you know, what they can do to increase the size. I think the borough's first choice would be to have it sized properly.
Right.
So you don't have that issue.
But we don't, we don't have that. That's not mandated in here. This is really just making sure that the inspections, that the plumbers evaluating it, that a competent person is looking at it and making sure. And and the issue about the connections is 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 very interesting. This is one I hadn't thought about. I mean, it's almost, it's it's similar in a way to our issue with sump pumps, you know, we don't want people putting sump pumps in the sanitary for a different reason.
Right.
That's much cleaner water, but never occurred to me. But but so that is one of the benefits of having, I mean, obviously having the plumber there looks at the
Yeah, if we can pick the kitchen, add a new I need the grease trap, that's a
Yes, and you can have a business that moves an existing space and you know, improperly. So I think that's all So, okay, so so anything in this would be to serve standard, you instantly have to upgrade your grease trap, but I would hope that in practice, what this means is we work a way of accommodating that or or being at work, whether it's more frequent inspections or, you know, something. So, okay, thanks.
But this is just for the maintenance?
Yep. And and maybe just I'll I'll note the only reference we have in our current code to this doesn't really require any maintenance or anything. It's in our our food and retail establishment, our current ordinance, which it looks like was last updated in in two thousand and four. The only reference that says septic tank, which is a frequent thing in the borough. And or grease trap tank pump out maintenance force must be submitted annually with the license renewal. It doesn't require any particular maintenance, doesn't require that they function in any way, just have to provide the reports that you have. And my my understanding from the interaction that we had regarding the the backup, said the need to to jet out the sewer lines and and to clean out the basements is that this language is not sufficient to have our health officer take a particular action when that happens.
Right.
Okay.
Right, so it's a good way just to have a little bit of teeth so we can do something and have something on the books to protect everybody, right?
Yeah, so I'm just, historically, I understand that we just recently had an issue. Is this something that had been happening, like?
Yes.
And is there a reason we never had this conversation in this ordinance earlier? I'm just
Well Hold on, hold on, one more time. David, you have the most history on this one. I'll say my recollection is that occasionally it had been referred to the the board of health as something to explore numerous years ago, but just didn't ultimately result in a revised recommendation.
And and Sky, in his role as our representative on the SBRSA, has raised this issue frequently. Which is also an issue on the treatment side. So the more grease goes through, aside from the threat of causing clogs, fatbergs, as some people call them, in the system and backups, but it's also, it's it's expensive to manage and challenging to manage at the treatment plants. So the 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 other part of this, you know, beyond grease traps and their function is just encouraging everyone, you know, to put that bacon fat down the sink because yeah, but but all this adds up. So it it is an issue. It's apparently, and I don't know why, but apparently it's one of the more challenging treatment issues that they have. And so this is something Sky is always, I channel him now and then on this, but the so, but yes, there've been
So there've been conversations, but we haven't
There have been conversations and and I think maybe overall within our existing ordinances, people in, you know, health officers and someone have worked to try to resolve this, but I think the determination was that maybe we needed something with, as Ryan said, a little more teeth to do it. Because there are certain areas that are probably intersection of the system and
So one one other piece that David, I think you reminded me a couple of weeks ago, which is a bizarre, bizarrely unfortunate implication or impact of something very positive that the borough's done over the last couple of years is that when you have a leaky sewer system, it means a lot of groundwater, regular water is getting into the sewer system and we have to pay to treat regular water that goes into leak. That water also acts to kind of at times, I suppose, not act as like a a water jet cleaning things out, but that certain parts of the sewer be in with grease. And so as we tightened up our sewer system to avoid sending rain essentially to our sewer plant, that there was actually less rainwater flowing to clear out grease and it it just hadn't
That makes sense.
Occurred as much, frankly. And so I think it is actually quite interesting that this situation, you know, we've we've been working on that for a while and this came kind of at the end of a extreme drought period as well, that there might have been an unusual historically amount of flood.
Yeah, that's right. Extremely low.
So the clock happened to move.
Right. And I don't want to stray too far afield on this, but I'm somewhere, it's either in the state code or in another actually, the engineering specification for sizing them when there's a new establishment, right? It's like, yeah. Because and that's that is that under the uniform code, so they they determine the capacity. So we don't, we don't have to, I mean, we have to make sure that that's being complied with.
It would be part of a plan, a new restaurant opened or something like that.
So we don't need to address that here. So, okay, that's good. Okay, thank you.
So for open to public, any other perhaps questions? We're nowhere near done with this, but questions with for our administrator or attorney before we open up to the public? So now open up the meeting to the public for a public hearing, an opportunity to be heard to comment on the grease trap ordinance eight ninety four. Please.
How are you? Ethan, I, place. I I just don't sort of understand some of the, some of the particulars here. So I was hoping maybe like to restate and understand like where this all came about. So there was like this precipitating event with a restaurant's grease trap backing up. Do we know for certain that the existing requirements were being adhered to at that rate? Front and it's like, therefore, like, is it necessarily an issue with the existing requirements or is it existing? Or is it the issue with, or they were being?
No, it's an issue with the existing requirements. There are basically no requirements.
It was my, I guess, I mean, I'm maybe not so informed about this, but I was under the impression that that under the current health code, you have to supply you know, your invoices from your grease trap cleanings under a certain
So the and and this back and forth I had with with someone on on this, Hopeful Township requires that in their code. And I think some businesses have been following their code and we're very thankful that they have because it's the right thing to do to to do, to have the regular maintenance and to actually have them looked at and maintained. We, the only requirement that we have currently is that you submit whatever reports you have annually. There's no actual requirement that you maintain anything that they function. It's just not in our code right now.
Okay, so that'd be what I was thinking, because I know the health department changed, I think it was like at some point it was Montgomery and then it was the township, right? And then it was back. What is it currently?
It is Hopeful Township. And it may very well be that other, you know, I I don't know, if they if they shared more stringent requirements than we actually had in our books and and perhaps great for everyone doing, I want to say the right thing. I'm not, I'm not quite sure because I will say, you know, I I
But the health, the health official can't
Enforce the other towns.
Can't enforce the other towns ordinance as the our ordinance.
Right, understood.
Yeah.
So I guess, I mean, just throwing that out there. I mean, if you have assuming that a restaurant needs to have an inspection, these these grease trap inspections usually, well, they have to have them quarterly to maintain your grease trap and you have that information in hand anyway as a precondition of getting your health inspection passed, you know, yearly. Like maybe that information is is all the source information necessary to know whether or not they're maintaining the traps as opposed to that, like that.
The other thing we're trying to capture here is that we have a licensed plumber to verify that it's actually functioning.
Right. But I I guess I'm just playing devil's advocate. I'm just saying, would wouldn't it be the case, though, that if if the grease trap inspector is there, I think usually they write down how much, at what capacity the trap was at during the inspection so they can say, oh, is it ninety percent or is it seventy or? You know, that sort of thing. Like, it's been my understanding. Usually it's the case The grease trap inspection and cleaning. That you could share that with, say, the town to, you know, provide enough information that it's being maintained without the additional.
And and that may be, uh, from our perspective, sufficient, you know, I I don't think it occurred to anyone that. Um, any of our businesses were for following. In fact, our new ordinance doesn't require the quarterly part of it.
Yeah.
Um, and I I whether that's best practice or because at some point a health officer suggested or showed you the the rules from. From Hopeful Township or Montgomery, um, but this.
Every every application is going to be different. How often it has to be cleaned because of the size, the use, it's all going to be different.
Well, so the. The Hopeful Townships, for example, and maybe this is one that your father requires that it be completely emptied a minimum of every ninety days. Um, there's specific things about the grease, again, I'm I'm thinking exactly what you do.
Yeah.
For example.
Yeah.
Um, and requiring uh complete emptied every hundred eighty days. Um, oh, sorry, that's the that's the sewer system, but. Um, you know. Thinking out loud that it 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 may be that what you're doing complies with.
And this is not the most stringent.
Yeah.
Um, our ordinance is not the most stringent that we could find.
So so it is possible that before. The quarterly inspections that are currently happening. Would fulfill the requirements.
No, we don't do quarterly.
No, I no, I know the quarterly reporting, I'm sorry.
Cleaning, yeah, well, the cleaning is a is a is a kind of inspection, yeah, it's it's a cleaning.
Well, if the grease trap isn't functioning. What's happening to the grease?
If the grease trap isn't functioning, that that grease trap is going to be filthy, right?
Well, hypothetically, if 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 the grease trap cleaning happened every ninety days and you have an incredibly busy restaurant that was just doing a lot of fat kind of cooking. If if like, let's say, for instance, it was always at a hundred percent capacity every time the the cleaning happened. Then maybe that information should be passed off to the town that, hey, maybe we need to up the intervals here for the restaurant. They're busy, maybe it's sixty days and not ninety days. I want to make sure that nothing is. Passing through. That that would seem.
Well, that's, yeah, I mean, that that's an important scenario that you're describing, because if you, I don't know, maybe you know how grease trap is constructed, but basically you have a vault. And it has a sort of a baffling and the grease flows. Okay, so the idea is the water comes in. That sort of one pump pipe that's fairly high, it exits on a pipe that's lower. So. Floating material in theory remains in the tank and what's exiting below, it's 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 just like skimming fat off a soup, you know, the same deal. So if the trap become has too bad in it. It starts going out of that exit pipe. So trap, so you could have a trap that's completely filled. And it's no longer functioning and grease is basically going through because you've you've reached the capacity of it. So the. So the key to that is how often are you maintaining pumping out that thing relative to the rate of grease going in, which is different for every restaurant, it's different in size of the trap. How long, you know, all those factors. So um, you know, I think. At some point in the picture, having licensed plumber is a good idea because you want to have somebody who understands the mechanics of the trap to look at.
Well, especially the connecting what we splatter pipes, like an inspector is not going to get into all pipes and stuff, so that's.
What um, the two things, what, so you guys do it every ninety days, right? That that's that's your your practice?
Most restaurants do, you have, I mean, I I guess it depends on how your plum is configured. Most of, I mean, most of the time it would just be out of self-interest if you do it enough.
Sure.
Your own pipes will back up. Now, I guess in this particular case, that that corrected feedback loop couldn't happen because. It was, I guess, the grease flew out of the facility instead of back into the restaurant where it's say, you know, you say, okay, well, now I got to pick up the phone and. Call somebody and and clean this thing out, so.
And and second question is, what what, I would say, type of person? Um, but who who does that type of service uh in your experience?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, there's companies that just do it, just uh grease trap cleaning companies, they come, it's essentially just like a powerful wet zack. And they just pop the lid off the thing and they suck all the grease out and they report, was this thing at capacity? Or was it, say, only at twenty or thirty percent capacity? If they're honest, they'll just tell you, hey, you know what? We don't need to come every, you know, every hundred and twenty days or something if you're not really busy or if the grease trap, like Doug was saying, is gigantic relative to the size of your facility.
Can I ask a question? I don't know if I understand when you and I spoke that there's a difference between looking inside a grease trap and saying, yeah, that's. That's clean. And then the second part is. How is the pipe going out into the sewer? Is that, those are separate.
Certified, yeah, well, for the for the for the plumber to certify that it's functioning the way it should.
Right.
That it's not allowing grease. To go down through the pipe.
And that is not a thing that the grease trap cleaner guy can do.
Some grease trap cleaners are plumbers.
Oh.
So.
So that could be.
Now, if you're using a larger company, there may not be plumbers, licensed plumbers, they're probably working for a licensed plumber.
Okay.
You know, but that's what we're asking for, you know, make sure you keep it clean and just certify to us that it's working.
Right.
It's working the way it's designed.
Right, so you're not, right, right, right. So so it's it's feasible that you can combine that service and meet the needs of the ordinance. If you're, if you're.
Yeah, if if the grease trap cleaner is working under the license of a plumber.
Yeah.
It's just like, that happens all the time where. You know, a licensed plumber has people doing work for them. They're not, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, four or five technicians that are working under a plumber. I think that would would satisfy their signing under that that license.
Right, so if they're doing it quarterly and once a year, somebody signs that certification, it's a annual requirement, right?
Annual requirement to make sure that it's working properly.
Right.
One time a year.
Yeah.
So the plumber could come out that time, the techs could come out every ninety days and one time a year the the plumber comes out and. Just certifies that it's working.
Right.
And I imagine both our restaurants and our health officer who receive either get these reports or receive them. Could maybe give us some samples of what. They tend to get, we can maybe compare the type of. Person to see, you know, maybe that ninety percent of. Our businesses are actually doing something right now that would comply with our.
I think probably ninety-five percent or ninety-nine percent comply. So the only, the only thing we're really adding here is little teeth to the to the ordinance. Like bringing it to everyone's attention and just asking for the certified one time a year when they get their permit that the that is functioning as designed.
And have that certification come from a place that has a plumber, yeah, okay, and it it may be, but we don't know. That. Most of the restaurants who do this and perhaps are following the ninety, you know, the quarterly schedule, which the order just doesn't necessarily require. May already have that in hand and.
Yeah.
Perhaps are fully compliant, but.
Yeah.
Um, because it's a function of. Who they choose and whether that matches up with the unit, so maybe that's something we can look at.
And and from a practical standpoint, I would think, so there's going to be an initial inspection by that plumber. Just also look at if you set the piping, make sure that everything is going into the trap that shouldn't be going into the trap, right? And then on an annual basis, it's just a matter of determining whether anything has changed. Presumably, it becomes easier.
And just that it's functioning.
Because as as long as the physical configuration of the system has. If it has, then they need to understand why and how and make sure of that, but otherwise it can be a pretty perfunctory thing and. In fact, if we have a company that's doing the cleanup and. Does have a licensed plumber involved, obviously you get one-stop shopping, but.
Right.
Um.
One one last question for you, uh, but at least for me, sorry, uh, uh, I think the. The townships. Requirements that maybe some of our business work we're looking at does require, you know, it emptied or maintained every ninety days. I think our ordinance is really more. I'd say fluid, um, but um, you know, it's just as often as as necessary. Do you have a, do you have a feeling like is? You know, is ninety days.
Yeah.
Appropriate, should, the minimum would not be inappropriate. I mean, we don't have, but to add that would not, that would be.
That's not on our list, that's, that's just, that's bare minimum. Like I said, should be doing that anyway, usually like you said, out of. Even self-interest, because there's going to be, you know, there's going to be a nice reminder when, you know, your your pipes are actually into your facility. Oh, I forgot to call the guy, but and I must have been in that particular case. The configuration must have been that it just. The piping must have been routed in such a way where, you know, that that didn't happen, it's just the. The consequence fell on someone else, so, yeah. But I think I'm with Ryan, I think that I'm just curious to know whether or not, uh, if the if the same information can be gathered through that like routine cleaning and inspection. Then, you know, maybe the maybe the plumbing thing might be redundant, the plumbing inspection might be redundant.
Technical question maybe for for that type of change were to be made um after either tonight or some reflection and amendment, is that. Material in your mind? Um, the type of person that would uh do that, like this is something we could reflect on and perhaps revisit without having to reintroduce.
Maybe table it tonight and then you're, um. Probably.
Probably.
I I I think that's a substantive change. If you go from the current draft requiring a license.
From plumber to, you know. Appropriate professional that's not licensed.
I do, I think that's a reintroduction, but you can make that up.
Yeah, and we need to understand. What that professional qualifications would be other than running a back truck. So, I mean, I know that's what they do every day, but you know. They may have experience with knowing how how the thing's supposed to look because they do it every day, but. You know, there's all sorts of variations in people's qualifications and skill sets, so and that person. Uh, we still have that issue of verifying that the actual plumbing in the system is configured.
I think that's why we're asking for a licensed plumber.
Right.
So that's the area.
It's a gray area.
Beyond the actual development itself. Are they, what's all fun to make the determination or are they?
Yeah.
Right, it's a licensed plumber, it's it's.
Then you know.
Yeah.
Also once a year.
It is what it is.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I mean, unless there's some other certification that would apply, I think having a licensed plumber is.
I would agree.
That was just my opinion, but um.
Oh, which is still the two, oh, oh, well, well, I guess technically, we are still in a public hearing for which Ethan has made some uh comments or. Fielded a discussion with us, which I'm very pleased with how it's.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Go on, no, I mean, it's, well, I would protectively, though, if anyone has any follow-up questions for. Ethan, that's the point where we're at now and and uh or if you have anything else to to add.
No, not at all, not at all. I'm happy to correspond on on some of the details and 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 to do a little due diligence myself. It seems like you guys are also.
Discussions. Online. Um, I forget it. So, but that's all.
So my one question to you, as someone who clearly is far more familiar with grease traps than I am, because my familiarity is very limited, um. Where Doug was explaining that we need to make sure that the plumbing is properly connected. Could you see a scenario where the plumbing was not properly connected, but but the everything, but the grease trap. Cleaner would would not notice, just would you? Would you not see problems?
Well, I mean, if grease is accumulating in and upon every cleaning. There there's there's grease, it's cleaned out and then more grease accumulates and so it's, it is collecting. And then as far as it discharging in terms of where it. Discharges, uh, you know, I guess I don't I don't quite know, because.
It could, it could, it could in theory be discharging. Where it shouldn't.
Yeah, I think that's probably more of a question for for David, as far as like once something gets into the.
It could, it could be mistress, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just clarifying that, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I'm trying to think of, you know, if you had a situation where you were, for some reason, it was a sink that wasn't connected to the grease trap was bypassing it, maybe just because of. I don't know, there were two sanitary lines or, I don't know where the grease trap is, we all know to the, you know. Everything's. You know, it. It's a little bit analogous to the situation we have with some pumps, it's a different. But uh, one of the things we do when. They actually come, usually come into the house, we always verify that there isn't a sun pump that's connected to this.
Right.
Um, because if it if it is, they're sending tens of thousands of gallons of water into the system that we're. But. You know. And you never know what kind of plumbing. Well, that is, it's really helpful, I got it.
In person or online, please, but with the raise hand button to make known, um. To. Keeping this into a future meeting. Close it, I just want to get guidance on, or maybe straw poll about what people want to think about.
I think so, I think you want to keep it open.
Okay.
And just continue the the hearing at a subsequent meeting and then continue your discussion and at that time, if you want to make changes, then. Then it's a reintroduction.
I I I want one possible thing would be to carry this hearing to our next meeting. While. Or understanding your. Us to be done as if, if there were to be substantive changes, we would have to reintroduce something else at that. Point, uh, other, I suppose would be to. Not do that and and just, you know, reintroduce something new in the future, um. Or so. Oh, I. Need. To work. To say. If if. There's. I read. All right, I I believe we are back online. Apologies, everyone, um. All right, we, uh, I, I believe we are back online. Uh, apologies, everyone. Um. Be as accessible as possible here. Uh, so, uh, we were discussing a possible motion about whether to carry this to a future. Hearing date. Or do something else. Um, I think that the carrying it would allow it for me personally, if we were to find out that the, the types of. Types of uh services that our businesses use now would fit to do ordinance with no change. I, I, I would be comfortable with no changes, the ordinance um in, in that. Case perhaps, but uh, but that's, that's just my thought. That probably the only scenario where we would just. Not change the ordinance and and have it be effective. At a future time, but.
That's right. We'll change. The proposed ordinance or the existing.
Sorry, the, the, if we were to carry the proposed ordinance to the future date. Um, the only thing we could really do at that point would be enacted as is. Um, and, and perhaps there might be some comfort in doing that if it turns out that the services that our restaurants already use. Have licensed plumbers and would comply with any requirements without any. Change. That would certainly satisfy me.
It, except that if the, the service that has a plumber associated with it now, then it does it in the future and they don't find the. Pipes that are attached, you know, the, the greater part of the system where that can't be seen immediately, that could be. A gap that we're leaving ourselves over and over.
Well, and I just, and I think, you know. As always. I'm sure we've got restaurants that are doing everything they're supposed to do and following those best management practices irrespective of this. And then we have.
The one that is.
Well. But. And, and, and again, this is always, uh, when we talk about an ordinance, it's, it's not a matter of. The people in the room or the people that are operating today. It's going forward. It has to sort of be universal. My, my only, um. I, I think there is a benefit to having a licensed plumber because you have a person that is in fact licensed as a license to uphold. Who's essentially making the certification. Uh, as opposed to whoever happens to be running the pump truck and I don't know what their qualifications are. And that's the only reason and, and. You know, it ideally, if the person that's uh doing the maintenance on the grease trap can also provide that certification, that's even better. The worst case is. Once a year, a licensed plumber has to come in and have a look around and you're going to pay for an hour of their time, I presume. I don't know whatever, you know, um, and I'm not. Saying that's incidental, but I think probably relative to the cost of maintaining the grease jack, it's probably a fraction of it. I. From my standpoint, and I, I know I'm, I'm always conscious of not wanting to impose a burden on. A business unnecessarily. At the same time, if the flip side is. If you don't have somebody making that certification who at least has some. Skin in the game from having a license and being a regulated trained person, then I'm not sure. You can't always rely on. It's that, that's, I'm not articulating this very well, but that's my concern that I'm.
No, so.
I agree.
So I, I then really the two options are. Yes, tonight. If the requirement as written in the updated ordinance said it be a licensed plumber. Or carrying it without changing anything.
Right.
For us either to do something totally different for at a future date or to become more comfortable with the licensed plumber requirement. At our next meeting. So I, I don't, I don't know that at, at, other than if someone were to want to just withdraw. The ordinance, those would be the items on, on the table or to revise it. I guess those are the. Those are the. I, yeah.
Um. I guess I see, um, I, I think it's, it's. Most likely from what I've heard that, that a licensed plumber. Is going to be part of this equation, but I also wonder like, you know, Ethan was talking about the. It sounds like they're already, they're already doing quarterly reports. They're just not in this ordinance. Um, and those quarterly reports that you're doing might even be more important, if not equally important. Um, it, it sounds like I know for myself, I wish I had paid more attention to this last month. And also, I, I think. This can't possibly be a super time sensitive issue if it's something we've been aware of. For years, but haven't yet enacted. So I, first, just speaking. Speaking for myself. I think there's enough complexities with this issue and we've also heard from the business community and, and, and I would share, I would agree with this. That something like this. It, it seems worthy of sitting down with some restaurant owners who understand the realities of their grease traps as well. I don't see a downside to taking an extra month or two to just make sure we get this ordinance right. Because absolutely, I just want to say the teeth where, where the business is liable for the, for the damage. I, I, I don't think any of us are going to have any qualms with that. Um, and that is, to me, that's the most important and it's. It's actually. It's very. Frustrating that this ordinance. You know, that, that we, we didn't deal with this all quite some time ago because it sounds like, it sounds like we're, you know. It's a good thing that we're ta- tackling it now. I think, I think Doug has found a lot of things that we were missing. And so I'm going to celebrate that we're finding it now, but I think if it takes us an extra month or two to get it right. Then, then I, I don't see.
So you're saying you want to carry it?
Carry it.
Carry it, carry it. And then we will, you know, maybe meet with some restaurant owners in between. Figure out. We can figure out in between if we need to start over from. You know. Go start over, go back to the first reading or.
Yeah.
Or modify this in such a minor way that it can be.
I'm going to carry it as much.
That would be mine.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. I just want to make one clarification though. I mean, the, the reporting is something that goes with the major. And that's always been a requirement, even though it was very generalized. That's not the same as inspecting the plumbing in the system and making sure. It's essentially saying you've pumped it out. You're doing the maintenance you're supposed to do. So I just. Don't, I don't, you're conflating the two and they're not the same thing.
But maybe we need to.
Hold up, let me finish what I'm saying, Heidi. The inspection requirement is something new. It is not the same thing as simply reporting that you've been doing maintenance all year. It's a specific requirement. I'm fine with carrying it, but I don't want to confuse this by somehow suggesting that somehow. What people are already doing is meeting that requirement for the inspection. It, it's meeting the requirement for maintaining the grease trap for those who are doing it. But there's also the issue of whether they're sized properly, functioning properly, whether maintenance needs to be changed. Because they're either undersized or just the relationship between the amount of flow and the size of the thing. Those are things that I think are not going to be determined by truck operator. Okay, so I just, I'm fine with carrying it, but I want to make sure that we're not somehow confusing. Two very different aspects of operating these things.
And, and I, I probably didn't explain this well, but it just seems like. Those reportings which are happening should also be in this.
It's, it's in there.
It is, it is. Okay.
Right. So. So, um, before I take a motion, um, because we've been on and off online, telling the motion would be to extend the. Uh, public hearing for comments at a, at a future meeting. Do have one online person who, um. May also be telling us whether we're working on, whether along this functioning as well. So before we. Finish, what if I not close the public area, I'm gonna, um, promote one member of the public. Um, hopefully for. Uh, comment and also hopefully to tell us, uh, we are actually working. Uh, online again, uh, tonight. So, um. So I'm, I'm, uh, tempted to bring you over as a panelist. And, um, if you, uh. Can hear us, uh, turn on your camera and, and microphone or we will give you the, the floor.
Wait, are, hi. Hellos, um, grateful.
One second, can you, can you? I. We are not able to hear you. So one second, let me, uh. If you can hear us, uh, we'll just keep vamping for a second while I make sure I understand what, um. What is wrong with our audio here? So give me one second with apologies. This has not been a great, uh. Technical evening for us. Um, and I'm gonna.
Turn your theater.
Try, uh. There we can hear you now with, with apologies. Um, uh, this has not been a great night for our tech stuff.
That's okay. Um, yes, I lost you at one point. Um. I was just, um. Yeah, no, I'm grateful that the tech is there to attend these meetings. Um. I think. Uh, having. Sort of. As a member of. Citizen in the, I'm Courtney Palm Bush, by the way, uh, I live on Model Avenue. Um. I'm, I'm just, I think the question that has just kept popping into my head is. There's a lot of, uh, you guys have done a deep dive into, um. The issue of, of the grease trap. Grease traps and the sewage system and all of that. And I appreciate that. I think that's great. Uh. I think. Again, the question keeps rising in my head is just. So. Someone came up earlier. Um, talking about the question about the. Housing development that's coming. And. I think what I'm noticing and what I just would like to hear you guys talk about maybe a little bit more is just why. You understand the importance of doing a deep dive on, you know. Taking care of the grease traps and all of that. But it seems like there hasn't been that much of a deep dive on. On maybe, you know, this Avalon properties and stuff like that. So how do you determine? You know, what are your priorities? Uh, where are you going to? Allocate your resources in terms of expertise. Um, we know you have a lot of expertise there. Uh, David Backy is an expert on, um. You know, a lot of things, just how is it that? You know, when citizens come forward and say, look, we would like more information about this. Have you done more research on this? We've sat here, I mean. Uh, those of us in, you know, who are listening to the meeting, we sat here for the better part of an hour talking about the importance of. Determining where grease is coming from and grease traps. And yet there's this other issue. And I'm just, I, I'm a little bit concerned about like. Priorities, like. Um, I mean, not that. It has to be definitely like priority, but I'm just. I guess there's some. I just, I would like to hear from you. About how you decide. What is number one on your table, what you're going to talk about, what you're going to research? Wh- what you're going to look into and why. And, and thank you for letting me, uh, speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, second here. Um, I'll be honest, it wasn't really, we're in a public hearing about the grease trap ordinance, but we can perhaps get some comment about this and. Uh, revisit this, uh, in a bit. Um, I, I don't know how much. That will be part of the record on the grease trap ordinance as we continue. I'll, I'll. I'll just, uh, I'll go personally to, you know, thank you for. Pointing that out. It is challenging to figure out how to, how to, how to do this. We have, um, you know, just briefly to. Talk about what our processes are for, um. For selecting things for, um. For ordinances that we have, uh, you know, rotating process. Um. Advised by our professionals about which things we. Can do or which things are, in particular, this one came up because since there was an emergency, so we put it back to the top of the list. Um, but, uh, we have a, a process where we, uh. The council president and I and a rotating member of work on our agendas are fed by things from our. Um, from our committees, um, to, to try to, to try to, to get to. And certainly emergencies come to the top of the list. Um, and we wish we could get to more. Non-emergencies. Anyone else have any?
Well, I'm just to add, um, I know this particular case, um. So. We had an emergency, but it was also something that, I think, that recurred. Generally speaking, over a period of years when we were, it was our understanding that this was a problem that we needed to look at more intensively and. Doug did an extensive investigation and talked to our super operator, talked to homeowners involved. Talked to various people, tell me if I'm missing anything about, you know, looked at the ordinances that were out there as we usually do, looked at models of other ordinances. You know, looked, talked to our engineer probably about the technical aspects of it, um, construction officials to find out, you know, what. Basically take our existing ordinances and, and improve them to, to, you know, where were the shortfalls in it? Um, and that's. The process. I mean, it's, it's.
Met with the board of health committee.
And the board of health, right. See, I know it's missing some. So there were a lot of different people involved. And then at the end of this, came to us with recommendations. So here's a model or something we think will work and will address the concerns and. And, and that's the process, um. It's, it's, um. So. And, and, and this was, you know, raised in, in part, but there was a homeowner of that particular issue, but that. It's just the larger issue of not just incidents, but, you know, because this is, this has been a longstanding issue and it is something that we've talked about, something that we've addressed. I think the board of health. My sense is that the board of health inspectors have been addressing this problem at some level. But without the framework in an ordinance that it really needed, right? In other words, the, the mere fact, we know, for example, from Ethan's and Lynn's, uh, uh. Testimony that, you know. Restaurants are required to basically do maintenance, but we just, we didn't have an ordinance that was really adequate. So there's a longstanding process of looking at our existing ordinances. As these things come up and revisiting them and looking at them to find out how we can improve them. I mean, there are. There's language in some of our ordinances that goes back decades. Um. And, you know, there, it's, it's all luminous. So, so this is a. Uh, a, a larger issue more than, um, just one particular incident and.
And I was not aware that this was a reoccurring incident until that happened.
Until it happened, right.
All of that, it's, it's been happening and happening and happening. So.
And, and it's just a system wide concern, right?
Right.
So, um, and this brought it to the forefront, um. It's the best explanation I can give. This much appreciate.
Anyone else want to add that? I, 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 I see Cory has her hand up. Uh, this is. Um. We are going to, I think there's going to be a motion to carry this public hearing into a future date. Well, there'll be additional time to put comments on this particular. Topic. I, I, I honestly, the, the. How we got to the ordinance is. Less relevant to, um, the topic. So I, if, if you've got a, um, a substantive comment about grease traps. Um, I'm gonna. Allow that, but beyond that, there, that, um. We're, um. Going to continue. I, I think it sounds like the pleasure of, of the council is to continue. The discussion of grease traps to a future meeting. So there will be additional opportunities as well. Um, but a- again, if, if you have a, um. Substantive, uh, grease trap question, I'm going to bring you back briefly, Cory, but, um, uh. But on that issue only because this is a public hearing on, on grease trap ordinance, so.
Uh, sure. I just, um, can you hear me?
Okay, answer you. Yep.
Okay, no, I just, I got disconnected. And so I wanted to, uh, just finish kind of the, the, the question, which I'm, uh. Is not so much about the grease traps. It's more just about that. Um, there seems, you, you know, there's a lot of due diligence being put in around this. And I think the larger, the question I was asking more so was like. I appreciate it. I admire the due diligence put in on this question, but it sort of feels like. It's, we, maybe there's some disproportionate, uh, you know, effort being put in on some things versus other things. That's my, that's my real question. And I, and I don't say that antagonistically. I just. I really genuinely am curious as to why some things merit. Nearly an hour long conversation and other things. Are not getting that kind of attention. So that's, that's, I just wanted to clarify my position on that because, uh, it ended. Before it just didn't quite, uh.
I, I appreciate, uh. Often.
Thank you.
That'll be part of the record here for our grease trap ordinance. I'm gonna, um. I'll bring you back to a, um, uh. A attendee mode for a second here. Um, and, um.
Sure.
And, 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 and what else on council, um, uh, you know, again, thank you for the, those comments. Um, we did get some. Substantive feedback. On our process as, as part of that back and forth. Does anyone else have any, anything else? No? Okay. Um, so seeing none, um. We are not, uh, I, I believe I, I would entertain a motion to carry this. Do we need a specific date? Or we just carry it to the, to.
The next.
A future meeting, next week, next meeting. Our next meeting is on the twentieth. First, first.
Carry it by meeting, right?
Or should we carry it to our regular, our regular, why do we apologize?
Yes.
Technically, the, the, the twentieth is a regular meeting because it's beginning of the year, but our beginning of the April meeting.
Right.
Um, would be the pleasure. Okay, so, um, for those interested in this issue, um, we will return. Um, obviously we would take comments in between. Think there'll be some outreach between, uh, the speakers here tonight and, and many of us, uh, to gather some more information as we. Uh, uh, think about this further. Um, obviously, if we have a, we plan to have a meeting, uh, that would not have this on the agenda on the twentieth of March where we would also. May not be the best time for comments because it's not part of public hearing, but it's another opportunity to, to hear from us. But the discussion and hearing this will be continued, uh, at our April. Council meeting. Discussion and hearing this will be continued, uh, at our April council meeting. Right? Oh, we do need a motion. I'll, I'll take a motion to do that, sorry. Krista, the second. Heidi, thank you so much. All, uh, in favors or?
I'll do a vocal.
Okay.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Ms. Hook?
Yes.
Ms. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes. Right. Our, um. Next item, and we have a, we do have an item that came out of our executive session that I'm saying out loud to remind ourselves, uh, to make a motion. On that, but I would first entertain a motion on our consent agenda. Um, I'll, I want to thank, um, our. Personnel committee, um, and staff. No, I'm sorry, my apologies. Um, I'll take a. Uh, ordinance, um, uh, eight ninety-five first reading, um, on the ambulance fee ordinance, if we can read that by title.
The ordinance of the Borough of Hopewell and Mercer County, New Jersey, establishing fees for the provision of emergency medical services and ambulance transport services. And amending chapter two of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Hopewell, nineteen seventy-five.
Um, I'll, I'll give a crack at this and, and allow perhaps Sherry or, or anyone else to. To jump in, but we have been requested working with our, our partners, I think as we perhaps talked about earlier in the evening, um. To enact a framework to allow the fire companies, uh, to bill insurance, uh, for ambulance calls. Um, and, and this would be, uh, introduction ordinance to allow that type of framework, uh, to occur. Um, some of the highlights are though that if, uh, there would not be any. I don't know if the word is balance billing, but ultimately if you do not have insurance, they would, would not be seeking payment from uninsured. Uh, people who do not have the funds, but only, um, uh, only insurers, um, in doing so, um. There was a comment before, I think we have a, a little bit of clarification to, to confirm, uh, prior to our, our hearing on it, uh. At our, I'll say our next meeting, but I'll, I want to be clear on this comparison, would, would be. Um, plan on taking this at our currently scheduled. March twentieth meeting or, um, or. Beginning of April meeting and something hadn't occurred to me, uh, before. Doug, you have a thought on that, um? Uh, do you think we'd have enough time for clarification on that, uh, ambulance issue to carry this or to have a public hearing at our? Second March meeting?
Why aren't we doing it?
We'll do it, okay, alright. With that, I'll take a motion to, uh, introduce.
Okay, uh, Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Ms. Hook, Mr. Mackey?
Yeah.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yeah.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Uh, thank you. So just again, for the record, while we will likely have another meeting on March twentieth. The public hearing on this ordinance would be at our April, uh, council meeting. Uh, with apologies for almost accidentally skipping that, um, move to item twelve, uh, motion, uh. Look for a motion in block for resolutions twenty twenty-five, forty-six through forty-eight. Um, two things I, I just personally want to note again, um. I want to thank our personnel committee, uh, Doug and our PW staff for, uh, doing a great job, um, in, uh, identifying, uh, a new, um. Employee for our DPW. Um, and I also, uh, want to take the time to thank, uh, Doug in particular, that our finance team. Uh, just take a moment to reflect on our railroad project, um, a railroad station restoration project. Um, if all you recall. We had received a grant, you know, for approximately two hundred fifty thousand dollars for what we thought would be a five hundred thousand dollar. Project. Uh, with time and further deterioration, um, the project increased considerably. And we have, uh, under Doug's leadership now, um, identified two additional grants. Where ultimately a much larger project, almost a million dollars worth of work, uh, is going to be done at taxpayer cost. Essentially less than our initial estimate, um, of matching the two hundred fifty thousand dollars grant. Um, this is a. Uh, the next step in that third now grant from the New Jersey Historic Trust, but, uh, and, and making that, I just want to just. Thank Doug and his team for finding the funds to make this, uh, possible, um, to continue the project. If not less, it's, it's a, a quite, quite a feat. So Doug, thank you. Um, uh, with that, I would take a, a motion now for, uh, for the three, uh, resolutions.
All motion.
Second, uh, any suggestion? Right, uh, all, I'm sorry.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Ms. Hook?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yeah.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yeah.
Ms. Williams?
Yeah.
Alright, um, our next item, this is, uh, maybe the first time that I can recall us doing this, but we, we have a, a walk-on, uh, resolution.
You're gonna read it?
When you're ready.
Okay, good, perfect, good, good, good. But let me, I'll, I'll preface it, um, and, and I'm glad you took good notes. So, uh, before this meeting, we had a. Um, uh, executive session to get legal advice from our, uh, attorney handling two pieces of litigation for us. One of which is a lawsuit that Verizon brought against Hopewell Borough more than a decade ago about the taxes we collected. On literally the value, property tax value of their wires in town. Um, after more than a decade, we were successful in, uh, keeping the taxes that we collected. We were right, essentially, the courts upheld. Uh, for the first year, two thousand nine, and each property tax case is a different year. And so there has been a case essentially every year since now and then. Um, uh, about twenty sixteen. Our attorney, um, and experts determined frankly that we, there was a crossover period where. Uh, we should not have. Uh, been collecting the taxes anymore and we, we stopped. There is a, uh, a, this all goes to a statute that. When, um, phone companies were slightly deregulated, there was competitive phone companies. The question became, well, if there's three phone companies, who pays the tax? And there, the rule was, if you have fifty-one percent of the phone lines in the area. Both of those things are very amorphous that we spent thousands of dollars defining and debating what those things meant, that you're the one who paid the tax. And at some point between. Two thousand nine and today, Verizon no longer had fifty-one percent of the phone lines, um, uh. Our attorney, uh, uh, Joe Zerola did a great job winning for us and essentially allowing us to keep. All of the taxes that we've collected, um. On this and put us in a great position, uh, going forward, not to have exposure, to have to pay back Verizon, uh, for things perhaps incorrectly. Um, collected. So we, we met with him and he has, uh, a settlement offer that we would, uh, essentially like to, to. Um, authorize, uh, him to continue working towards accepting, which, uh, essentially would allow. Hopewell Borough to keep all of the taxes that we've collected from them, um, and, uh, that we would continue, uh, likely to not. Um, we stopped collecting taxes with them in about twenty sixteen and we have no plans to, to do that, uh, um. Uh, it's, it, we don't care if saying this, but, you know, we, our, our experts believe that we at some point became. Under that fifty-one threshold and we, we see it staying there, um, uh, so, um. Uh, do you want to read it in the last for motion? Is that maybe?
Uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-nine, being resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Hopewell. That Joseph Torriello Esquire, counsel for the Borough in the pending Verizon litigation. Be authorized to finalize a stipulation of settlement in the Verizon lawsuit and that the mayor be authorized to execute the settlement agreement.
Right, um, any, uh, perhaps questions for? Anyone in this? Otherwise I would take a, a, a motion to, to authorize the settlement as, as Reggie read.
Fun move.
Do I say it?
I'll second.
Right, thanks much. We do a roll call this month.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Ms. Hook?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Um, I'll just, just note again, um, our appreciation for our attorney and, and getting us to this point, we have been. Uh, this was a David and Goliath situation where we were successful and, and this settlement allows us to kind of confirm, um. Our position that way and I'm very appreciative of, uh, of the, the efforts working on our, our behalf, uh.
Did you mention that it went to the Supreme Court? I intended things as just one person.
That's right, you know, we, uh, this was a, a tax court matter that was upheld by the appellate courts and, as David said, by the Supreme Court. Um, it's one of those things where we were picked as the, uh, I don't say poster child, the Brighton singled us out, um, and. I'm, I'm happy to say we were eventually successful, we could have put it behind us, so thanks to everyone as well.
Yep, that's a good one.
Alright, uh, next we've got two, um, uh, appointments, I know with, with several coming up.
Claims for payment.
No, I don't think we need to pay for this. I'm gonna do every other, every other item. Apologies, uh, item thirteen, uh, motion to approve, uh, claims for payer.
I'll second.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Ms. Hook?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Um, with that, we've got, uh, two appointments and all this, uh, want to get, one is a reconfiguration of, of one, uh. To a, to an alternate position, uh, and, um, one for, um, our board of health and I've. Had several other reviews this weekend expecting some more appointments at our, at our next, uh, meetings. Uh, very appreciative of everyone who volunteers in the borough. Uh, and, uh, if, unless you're already talking with someone about an appointment or, and, and we talked to one of the, uh, council people. Um, and you're interested in, in serving on a committee, please, uh, please see us. Um, at, at times it's a little. Tricky as it turns out to figure out if we have spots available, um, I was. Briefly thought there wasn't and, and I'm glad there was, uh, uh, so that, I think those are just. Uh, next, um, we'll do our, uh, our liaison reports, um, and Anthony, you want to start on, on your side if you've got anything this month?
Yeah, absolutely. So the, the board of health actually did not meet this month, but still got a few updates. So you just mentioned the new member, Amy. Um, who also ended my show, does that have a stint of the new kid on the blocks? Since it's only a month since I joined. Um, also the board asked us if we would approve and allocate the annual membership fee. For the board to join the New Jersey Local Boards of Health Association with ninety-five dollars. Um, it's for membership, April first through March thirty-first. And it's probably the only forum that we have to coordinate amongst the different boards of health, so they'd appreciate our support for that. Uh, also in touch with the Greater Mercy Public Health Partnership, uh, which is, I was connected to, to that by Gary Dorsey, our health officer. And they've mentioned two events that they wanted us to flag. So first of all, there's a community advisory board meeting. On Tuesday, March eighteenth, at Capitol Health, and that's to talk about the community health improvement plan. And also programs about fight food insecurity in our community. And secondly, there's a couple of community listening sessions, um, in relation to the opioid settlement advisory council. One is in, uh, Trenton on nineteenth of March and also in April in Robbinsville, April eighth. So that would be a chance to learn about how some of those funds could be used, uh, to address services that support. Opioid use disorder and other forms of substance use disorder.
Well, that's it. Thank you, David. Uh, we'll go, like, what was the members math from middle school? Was it full method or first outside inside?
Outside.
Yes.
Okay.
Heidi, you want to go next?
The other outside.
Yeah.
Um, the green team, um, the Borough Green Team is actually meeting a little later this month, um. These is our sustainable jersey grant, um, has been extended through the end of September. Um, we're working on, as part of that, a composting workshop. Um, and a mailer which will be going to all the homes, if, all of, for all the borough residents as well as continuing our potlucks. Um, we are in need of more Tress volunteers. The plastic recycling is going very well. The primary thing we need a volunteer for is helping to drive the plastic from Hopewell Borough to Wegmans. Um, and the reason we're looking for volunteers for that is. We don't want the environment, environmental impact of me making a dedicated trip to Wegmans. With plastic in my car is a little silly and a lot of people go from Hopewell Borough to Route One. So if folks are able to do that, and, and just so you know what it involves, um, actually Sherry did it this morning, thank you.
Yeah.
You take a load of plastic, you, you get the cart from the cart corral, you fill up the cart. You take it to the customer service desk and you say, this is for next truck, you know, this is for next trucks.
She said maybe here.
And le- and you leave it there and you, you, you text a picture from your phone to my phone.
I did.
And she did. So, um, if anybody can help with that, they can reach out to me. Um, open space, I went to my first Hopewell Valley open space meeting. It was fairly uneventful for the first meeting of the year, I have to say, they, um. But you, we, they did discuss a subliminal upcoming request from the township to allocate some open space funding for the restoration of the corner schoolhouse. And that's something that as a committee we were gonna ask for more information about and so. Nothing, nothing happened.
Thank you. David, yes?
Hi, um, so the, uh, recreation committee is getting very close to having our annual, uh, event flyer done. We're meeting on Monday for finalize it, um, thanks to Jenna Schroder, who year after year does all of that work for us on the PDF to create it. Um, you know, Jack talked about what couple of paper we have this year, they'll let me know. Uh, so that should be going out to everybody, um, next couple of weeks. Uh, library board, um, met on Monday, uh, Dr. Meloche, Dr. Teresa is, uh. The superintendent of schools in Hopewell is gonna be joining, um, the Hopewell Borough Library Board, uh, which we're very excited about, um, because. Mark, our, um, school, you know, representative, um, is involved with the, um. Funding, I think, of the referendum, so there's sort of like a conflict, so he decided, he's very busy, so he's stepping aside, um. They are working on events and fundraising and, um, they're working with, a lot with Doug to, uh, realign the. Financing that was kind of part of the borough and. Is moving over to the library as its own entity, so that's in place. So thanks for all your work on that, Doug. Um, personnel committee, as was mentioned, uh, we hired the new, uh, prep public works employee and that's about it. Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, so EDC is working on their yearly plan that we need to submit, um, so that is coming. Thank you to the mayor who alerted us to two county grant opportunities for businesses that will be circulating to them. Um, one is for signage and facade improvements, one is for sort of standard business expenses, so. I'm gonna talk to you, Lynn, and everyone else, but it's really, it's, uh, it's nice, it's like a reimbursement expense, it's pretty.
Thank you.
Pretty hefty, um, and some immediate needs that, that we've identified, um. That, that Ethan and I will be working on, um, among other EDC members. Hobo Fire Department responded to thirty-seven calls in January, EMU responded to forty. And then I'm sure everyone knows about the crazy fire over the poor farm. Poor Farm Road. So they, they've been, they've been very busy. Uh, let's see what else. Senior Advisory Board, late short notice, but tomorrow they're having a, the, the county is having a social services. Program review for seniors and family members at the, um, township building. And, uh, as always, you can find more information on the website. And Shade Tree Committee. It has approved, uh, Lyndon Horton, our local Eagle Scout is, uh, his, his project is approved and he's. He's gonna plant, he's gonna raise funds and plant six service berry trees on the prospect. Along the, uh, this prospect along the cemetery. Um, kind of bit of tree knowledge for you. A service berry was named that because it was like the first. Tree that blooms in the spring and that was the first time that people, I don't know, I'm laughing about this, but. When you had, in the olden days, someone passed away and you wanted to bury them, you had to wait for the ground to soften up and so. When you had, were able to dig the grave, it was of the same kind of. Bloom during your funeral service, so, and then we're planting them by the cemetery. It's all community. Yeah, so hopefully by spring, we'll have six trees.
Water filler everywhere, um, so we put out our public notices for PFOS and. As everybody knows, because you got them, um, and, um, thanks to the water supply team, really working on, um. And, you know, just to get the PFOS thing onto two double-sided pages for you. Um, I know, I thank you, Ryan, and, and, and there was another notice, so with it, it has to do with our zinc orthophosphate, uh. Issue which I won't worry about the details on, but anyway, suffice to say the, uh, PFOS numbers are still within the state. Standards, uh, there've been, no, no change there, which is all good news, um. And, uh, the, the issue of the zinc orthophosphate was that we had last year had a problem with, uh, it's an injector that injects zinc orthophosphate into our system. Well, number four, which was not operating properly and had to be replaced and now the zinc orthophosphate levels are where they should be. Purpose of zinc orthophosphate is to, um, it's an anti-corrosive additive in very low concentrations. And it helps to, uh, reduce or minimize the amount.
And it helps to, uh, reduce or minimize the amount of copper and lead that, uh, leashes out of pipes. And so it's, it's working fine. And our copper and lead results have always been below the standards, never in like twenty-seven years have we ever had a violation for that. So it's fine. Maybe that's back in shape, but that's why you got the additional letter in case, you know, you were craving more information about, uh, you know, water treatment. Again, as I mentioned earlier, uh, I've been doing a lot of data analysis, uh, in support of just, you know, ongoing analysis on the issue of possible sit in the water system, looking at our rates, looking at the rates of rain structure and rates of New Jersey American historically. And comparisons and all that information will be put out to the public when we, um, you know, kind of resume our public outreach on that. And basically everything that I do, I end up putting right into PowerPoint slides at the end. So we're ready to get that out there. We're working on FAQ document also on the water system and, and the possible sale process as well. So lots more to do on that. And we have Doug, how many water main breaks this year or leaks? It's five?
So far this year, five.
Five.
Yeah.
And, and yeah, in, in two months.
I've lost them.
Brutal. Well, to, I haven't even gotten the bills for all that they're having.
Yeah, probably, uh,
It's a lot.
Probably about thirty-four thousand.
Yeah. Um, and, um, you know, one that was just agonizing because in an old system, if you ever tried to repair a toilet or a sink in your house and you gotta shut off the water and the valve doesn't close all the way, or it leaks after you open it back up and all that. Well, imagine if you're doing that on an eight inch water main and that's what our guys were struggling with trying to isolate, uh, uh, what would have been a simple repair in front of the museum last week. Um, and that's why there was water all over the bay. It's just they finally got it done. There was a struggle and it's just one of the challenges of working with an old system. But they did a wonderful job as always and, um, you're very attentive. So thanks to all. And, um, I think that's all I got.
All right.
Chris?
Mayor Kennedy and Doug and I met with the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission to discuss the demonstration project for North Greenwood Avenue. We are currently reviewing concept plans and talking about maintenance and placement. We are still aiming for implementation in late spring. It is my hope that once this project proves to be a success, we'll be able to implement similar traffic calming measures elsewhere in the borough. Um, you may have seen in the last Borough email blast sent out on February twenty-third that Mercer County is in the process of putting together a vision zero action plan with the goal of reducing the number of people killed or seriously injured while traveling in Mercer County to zero by twenty fifty. Vision zero is a worldwide strategy to eliminate all traffic fatalities and serious injuries while increasing safe, healthy and equitable mobility for all. The link to the project website and the survey to collect your thoughts are available through the Borough website. Uh, once the survey is complete, you may enter to win a chance to win a one hundred dollar gift card. And maybe we can send this out again this weekend so everyone can get another chance at it. Um, I attended the New Jersey twenty twenty-five Strategic Highway Safety Plan Strategies Workshop on February twenty-sixth. It was an event hosted by the New Jersey DOT where we discussed strategies to improve road safety throughout the state. The main focus was on education, but I was threatened to find a vocal group of supporters for automated enforcement, which should be a raider when we talk about improving traffic safety and saving lives. Um, also the fourteenth annual New Jersey Bike and Walk Summit will be held on March twenty-ninth. That's a Saturday in Princeton. This is a really fun event with lots of interactive sessions that is organized by the New Jersey Bike and Walk Coalition, which is a statewide advocacy organization. I will be a panelist for a session hosted by the Safe Streets to School Academy. And, um, this session is gonna be about engaging with one's community to build better streets and early bird tickets, uh, are on sale until tomorrow. And I know that you expressed, we're gonna, I'm missing the last one.
Yeah, what, what, Ryan, the, the date again with the conference?
It is Saturday, the twenty-ninth, and it's right in Princeton, so it's nearby. Um, and so I'm gonna put out that the conferences like these are critical opportunities for Hopewell Borough to grab a seat at the table in broader regional discussions about traffic safety and to build relationships that can help us accomplish our local goals. Our participating shows that we are invested in the broader community and winning support from the state, county and regional partners paves the way for us to strengthen the cause at home. Our borough dedication to improving traffic safety is known well beyond our municipal boundaries. But there is still much work to be done. Our accomplishments thus far show that we are willing to put in the work, be creative and persevere despite having limited resources. This makes other organizations want to work with us and help us achieve our goals. They know that safety is our priority and that we will follow through even if the odds seem stacked against us. We made a lot of progress in changing traffic laws in the borough and the Hopewell Township Police Department have been great partners. The next step is to add traffic calming measures like we're working on for North Greenwood Avenue to slow vehicles down and help the borough reach our goal of zero deaths and serious injuries caused by traffic violence. Slower speeds save lives. Now to transition to history, um, I was fortunate to attend the plaque dedication for the Van Nest Klett House on Sunday, February twenty-third. And that's your big house next to the museum in town. Um, this house, like many in the borough, has a rich history. It was the site of local organizing efforts to pass the nineteenth amendment to the US Constitution to secure equal voting rights for women near the turn of the last century. A local author, Nancy Kennedy, was there to discuss the history of suffragists meeting at the house and of course in full costume, which my kids thought was pretty awesome. Um, if you've ever wondered about the history of your own home or thought about how to commemorate it, please know the Hopewell Valley Historical Society provides a historic lineage program as a fundraising activity. Their website states, "The House Lineage Committee researches the history of old houses in the valley. Homeowners who would like to have their house researched can obtain the services of the committee. This may result in a plaque being produced for the historic house, including patient about the property and/or a newsletter article about the structure." And this is a fun and interesting way to journey through the past and support a worthy local organization. There's a flyer in the back of our room for anyone who is interested with more information, you can contact the Hopewell Valley Historic Society for more. And lastly, um, I spoke with Mayor Kennedy and Councilwoman Hook yesterday about inviting some first graders from Hopewell Elementary School to Borough Hall for a little field trip. Uh, whenever I bring my kids here, they have a great time. They love sitting at the dais and fighting the gavel. So I agree that during the trip, the kids could learn about the services the borough provides and you can maybe hold a mock council meeting with children, taking turns finding roles of council members and also be in the public. It just seems like a really fun way for kids to get a glimpse into the importance of being actively engaged and also how rewarding it can be. The end.
All right. Um, uh, thank you, everyone, uh, both here in person, online, and, and everyone on the side of the dice and our, our staff as well. I know a lot of work from everyone involved in the borough, volunteers and professionals this month. Um, reminder, um, uh, this Saturday, I've got my coffee hours, um, uh, at nine o'clock here at, at Borough Hall. Um, I do bring coffee. No one ever drinks it. No, it's not. That would be. That's actually a, and that's an interesting idea. No, anyhow, um, I, I wanna thank, um, again, the members of our community, particularly the faith community and our business community and our library. We are still working on, uh, gathering our various stakeholders, um, uh, for an event information for our community impacted by the recent changes in immigration policy. Uh, Councilman, uh, Fuller is gonna be assisting on, um, with this, with me, me on this, sorry. Um, and, uh, for members of our community, uh, please reach out to either of us and that goes to people on this board, um, uh, interested in, in helping put that together more to come, um, as that, uh, coalesces. Um, I, I, I'm asked from time to time and I, I try to write an update on what we're doing with, I'll say abandoned or derelict properties in town. Um, I will, uh, without being specific, cause it does make it a little harder to, to get done what we're trying to do from time to time. But, uh, the borough, for myself and, and staff remain in regular contact with many of the owners that you might expect, um, need to be contacted with. Um, I'll say some of the discussions have been, um, encouraging. Uh, but until there is actually change, um, we're not going to stop, uh, doing that or looking at, um, other enforcement actions. And that includes perhaps changing our ordinances to allow for additional um, enforcement. Well, I'll ask our community, um, while we all feel like we know that these things are, are there or that someone's seen it, it actually is quite helpful. I'm not looking for an avalanche of things, but uh, don't assume that it's been complained about. Um, and actually, when it comes to enforcement, it's very helpful to have, um, a variety of information from residents. Um, so if you, uh, are concerned with something, it is always appropriate, um, to send a message either to myself or our administrator, Doug. Um, if it seems like a health issue, our health officer is available, our zoning officer. Uh, and ultimately just, um, when it comes time to take some type of action on something that may be negative in town, the more information we have in a file, the, the better, um, chance that we have as, as a governing body, um, uh, to take action on something like that. Uh, but it continues and, and I hope to have specific, um, positive things to report, um, soon. Uh, when I invite the, uh, our, the community and, um, council's been invited to a series of open houses, the school districts is having, uh, particular one, um, about, um, our elementary school that's coming up that I'll send the information about, um, um, just a, a note. So I remember when I do that to, to picture, I remind everyone that if we are planning and attending to, to make sure we coordinate, um, so that, uh, we, we cannot have, uh, three, more than three of us really in a place without noticing it. Excuse me. When I say notice again, I mean, not that we see that it happens, but providing public notice for more than a core of them must, of us to be, uh, at a meeting. Um, we've also been invited to the community as well, uh, to Mercer County's Vietnam War Veterans Day, uh, commemoration on the twenty-sixth of March at eleven o'clock. Um, the Parkside Avenue County offices, I'll send that around as well. I wanna thank the Hopewell Fire Department and all of the volunteers there. Uh, congratulate them. Uh, everyone was honored at their annual dinner this past month. Um, I'm very much looking forward to honoring some of the deserving, uh, members there at, uh, the Second Annual of Mayor's, Hopewell Valley Mayor's First Responder, uh, Award Ceremony that's gonna be on June seventh at Woolsey Park. More information has to come together, uh, but if anyone in our community, um, has a specific, uh, first responder that they, excuse me, believe is in need of particular, uh, accommodation this year, please let me know, um, for these awards. I do coordinate with the, with the chiefs, of course, uh, at our liaison. The borough is involved in, uh, the, excuse me, statewide master plan, apologies, um, cross acceptance process with Mercer County, uh, every period of time, the state, just like the town has a master plan for its zoning, the state has an overall master plan for the state. We are, uh, attempting to participate with our other Mercer County towns, uh, and, um, uh, the county planning department on comments to the plan. Uh, that is, uh, there was a meeting last month and we expected some perhaps action later this month in the spring, uh, for the state's master plan. I, uh, if you follow what we've been doing on affordable housing, just a quick update. At our January meeting, we approved our, um, you know, intentions to, um, make good on what the state believes our affordable housing numbers are and will soon be working on a plan to accommodate that. I'm, I'm happy to say for Hopewell Borough, um, that the time period for, um, outside parties or developers or uh, the Builders Association to challenge what we've done has expired without them doing so. So, um, uh, several hundred towns in the state received challenges. We did not. I'm very, um, um, excited to continue to try to put our money where our mouth seems to be on, um, evidencing our community's um, dedication to, um, accessibility and affordability through this plan, uh, as we go forward. The Hopewell Valley Mobile Food Pantry is having its open house on April thirteenth. So send our, um, information to, to council if anyone's like to attend. This is their fifth anniversary. Um, and, uh, and congratulate them on the, the good work that they're doing along with so many other nonprofits, uh, in our area. Uh, the planning board met last night, uh, a short meeting, uh, like the council. They have listed several other, uh, meeting dates, not just the once a month that we're used to. So they will actually have a meeting on the nineteenth in, in a little less than two weeks. It is expected that there will be, uh, a hearing that night on, on an application. Um, unfortunately had a notice problem last night. Uh, board's doing their best to accommodate, um, you know, quickly returning. Uh, but if you received a notice about that, uh, you should, it will be re-noticed, uh, uh, for the next meeting. Uh, but it's likely that that application, um, would be on the nineteenth. Thank our communications, uh, committee. We spent a lot of time looking at possible website enhancements and vendors. Uh, certainly more to come on that, um, uh, in the, the coming months. And, um, I just wanna finally note, just to thank Doug, has worked out, um, the details of, um, the Hopewell Valley OEM communications. Um, we have an email system. Uh, if you sign up on the Borough website, you've got an email, um, uh, usually once a week with updates that have been on the website or as we've done unfortunately often last couple of weeks, when there's been a water main break, we'll send an email out that day to let people know, um, if it's been repaired or had expected disruption. Um, we will soon be, uh, able to coordinate additional, um, notifications through the Hopewell Valley uh, OEM and Hopewell Township Police Department, uh, emergency tech system. This is called Everbridge. Um, there will be an email out, um, on our system, reminding people to sign up for that separately. We really think everyone should be involved, sign up for both the emails, which tend to be, I don't mean to say the things we do are not important, but more likely that trash isn't being picked up or reminder of a meeting schedule. Um, and then for emergent things, we're gonna start to, uh, utilize the, the resources with our, um, surrounding, uh, governments for that as well. So, uh, on our, on our website, um, you'll see the same spot where you would sign up for our newsletter uh, and emails is a spot to sign up for Everbridge. And I, I do encourage everyone, uh, to, to sign up and, and thank Doug for closing that loop so that we can use, uh, that resource to get information to our residents.
And it works, cause I got a text at one forty-four this morning.
That, there was wind. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I will say is that what if you sign up, just be careful, all the boxes that you check. Cause I was like, yes, I want phone calls, I want texts, I want emails.
And then it's like, the phones ringing and it's a text. It's like, okay. And then be like, okay, cool. And then I would have it like. Maybe only sign up for one option or the other.
And as we try to add these things, um, I know this, the past couple of weeks were, uh, you don't like to have these type of tests of communications, but we did have several water main breaks. And, um, if you felt you got emails there or knew about it or not, would be great to get that kind of feedback, especially as we transition or, uh, more messaging, um, systems. Uh, so again, uh, thank you, everyone. Uh, Doug, anything on, um, your reporting like?
Yeah, if someone has a question on my report, I think we're good.
So much stuff. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, as we always do, we've got, uh, two in this night, three, cause we have a public hearing. Uh, opportunities for public comment. We'll open up the, the second and final one, uh, for people here in person or on on the Zoom. If you're in person, come on, come on front. On, on, on the Zoom, uh, for those handbub. Seeing none, I will, uh, accept the motion to adjourn. Um, noting that our next meeting is scheduled for the twentieth of March. We have scheduled now, um, two a month essentially, um, and we will always post on our website if that changes and be sending out our, our weekly emails with the agendas or if, uh, as the planning board, um, did last month, didn't actually have their second meeting, we'll make sure that everyone knows about it. But for now, our next meeting will be the twentieth.
And it will be in person.
Correct. Like, um, first, we have a second. All in favor? All right. Thank you, everyone.